Good evening. The League of Women Voters, Metro North Chamber of Commerce, and the North Metro, or North Suburban Optimists welcome you to this forum to meet the candidates for running for Anoka County Commissioner District Six. This includes Linwood Township, Columbus, Lionel Lakes, Centerville, Circle Pines, Lexington, and an eastern slice of Blaine. Thanks to the candidates, Andover City Hall, and QCTV for making this event possible. This year, the League of Women Voters is holding all of our Meet the Candidates forums without an audience to avoid COVID-19 spread. Questions for upcoming forums for the general election can be submitted on the LWV ABC website, and we encourage you to do that. I'm Jerry Nelson, co-chair of Voter Service for the Anoka-Blaine-Coon Rapids area League of Women Voters. I live in Champlin in Hannibal County, so I can't vote for these candidates. All candidates for this race were invited to participate in the forum, and they're both here tonight. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any candidate or political party. I'm sure these candidates care very much who you vote for, but the League does not. The League does hope that each of you will vote, and our goal for our forums is to help citizens become informed voters. Welcome to the Candidates for Anoka County District Six Cindy Hansen and Jeff Reinert. We will begin with three questions that were provided to the candidates in advance. This will be followed by questions submitted online. Candidates will alternate who answers each question first, and answers will be timed and are limited to one minute. So first of all, Cindy Hansen, describe your background and community involvement.
Okay. I have served as an Anoka County elected official for nine years as the mayor of Spring Lake Park. Served on the Anoka County Fire Protection Council for six years, the Anoka County Joint Law Enforcement Council nine years, its Governance Committee three years, a three-city, two-county Fire Department Council for nine years, just to name a few. I have achieved a Bachelor of Arts degree from Concordia College with a double major in Art and Business Administration. I sang in the church choir, assisted in the church kitchen, taught Sunday and Vacation Bible School, along with being an award-winning school volunteer. I have collaborated successfully on projects with Commissioners Brasshead, Schulte, West Cordiac, and Silver Raja, and have great relationships with surrounding mayors. I am a proud recipient for the Award for invaluable service to the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon and the Military Order of the Purple Heart.
Thank you. Jeff Reinert, describe your background and community involvement.
Okay. Well, on the private side, I've been in business for over 35 years, and so I know how to budget and spend efficiently, otherwise you go out of business. On the public side, I've won 11 elections over the last 20 years, and I think that's because people appreciate, you know, how I do business. Community involvement starts with knowing your community. I've lived in my district for 45 years. Moved there in 1975, and, you know, my opponents only lived there a year, so, but, you know, it's a free country, you can run. Been involved with a lot of different things in my area: Sons of the American Legion, Rotary, Yellow Ribbon Network, to name a few. But we live in a great area, and I just consider it an honor to be involved in any way I can to help our community. Thank you.
Jeff Reinert, what are your qualifications for serving as Anoka County Commissioner, and why are you seeking the office?
Well, qualifications, I guess I just went over some of them. I think it's my private experience in business that really helps me be a good person elected to office. You know, city council member for 10 years, mayor for another 10 years, and now as an Anoka County Commissioner. Basically, problem-solving and thinking out of the box. Why I'm seeking office, I just want to continue to do what I've done for the last 20 years, and that's, you know, provide good representation, problem-solve, and I just enjoy working with people, and I very much enjoy the job, so hopefully I can continue to do that.
Cindy Hansen, what are your qualifications for serving as Anoka County Commissioner, and why are you seeking the office?
I am running for Anoka County Commissioner to give you a voice. I believe in the board's mission for servicing citizens in a respectful, innovative, and fiscally responsible manner. I've actually delivered results and can contribute to further that mission. Being an elected official in Anoka County for nine years has given me irreplaceable experience in leadership, negotiating, balancing budgets, prioritizing, being transparent, thinking outside the box, but most importantly, listening to people and giving people a voice. I've worked successfully with a two-county, three-city joint powers agreement for nine years. I'm recognized for bringing in over $55 million of redevelopment to Anoka County, including its very first Hy-Vee. My fiscally responsible approach to growth has created jobs while maintaining a strong commitment to public safety. I am not a career politician, I am a public servant.
Thank you. Cindy Hansen, what are your short and long-term goals for Anoka County?
I believe the goals at this time need to be focused on safely reopening and bringing business to Anoka County. I support keeping taxes low and providing essential services. In order to obtain that balance, I believe that businesses must thrive. This also ensures well-paid employment, allowing residents to stay within the county. My reputation of collaborating with officials, residents, and businesses will be crucial in reopening and establishing new businesses and employment. I'm a strong advocate for small businesses and working with businesses. For example, I worked on rezoning to assist growth for a small business, and worked to allow a business to defer their sack-and-wack fees, which allowed them to succeed. I would work hard to make business thrive in Anoka County. I'm still concerned with lack of connectivity, IT security, and public safety.
Thank you. Jeff Reinert, what are your short and long-term goals for Anoka County?
Well, short-term goals is really, you know, there's a lot of things going on, rioting and things like that, and, you know, short-term goals is to continue to support the sheriff's county and then all the independent police departments and fire departments that are in the county. I think that there's a lot of nasty things happening as far as name-calling, and I think it's a disgrace, actually, what's happening, and defunding the police and all that nonsense. So, short-term, I think, is just to get behind the boys in blue, support them, and, you know, make sure that they have what they need. But the long-term goals, you know, when I was mayor, and now in the city councils for 20 years, really believed a lot in autonomy of each city. Each city needs to be able to develop. We have a very diverse county, and I think that it should probably stay that way, and let cities develop that the way they want to. And when I was a mayor, I made sure that we did that, but now as a county commissioner, my role is more to support the seven cities that I represent to make sure they have what they need to be able to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to questions that have been submitted online from the public, and we'll start with Jeff Reinert with the first one. How would you use this office to promote public health and safe interactions to minimize the spread of COVID-19? And with a second question, how will you help your district and the county as a whole recover from the COVID crisis?
Well, we're doing that. I am in office, and we actually got $43 million from the federal government, and we're allocating those funds as we speak. What we're doing, too, is we took $5 million to help businesses, and that's a project, a program, actually, that was just launched last Monday, and, you know, people listening should probably spread the word on that. It's for nonprofits and small businesses. It's an amount of up to $10,000 to help those businesses. Small businesses have been hurt tremendously. I actually offered a resolution to the Anoka County Board, and it was passed with a five-to-two vote to help churches, number one, small businesses, and nonprofits. And, you know, we've been, I guess, just doing what we can to make sure that they experience the least amount of stress. We've lost a lot of businesses right now, and so we'd have to support them, make sure that they can stay in business.
Thank you. Cindy Hansen, how would you use this office to promote public health and safe interactions to minimize the spread of COVID-19, and how will you help your district and the county as a whole recover from the COVID crisis?
Well, I think we need to rely on the people, the staff, that are at the county that have been working with this. I know the funding is going to be distributed by the end of the year, by when this office is filled, or the person takes office, or continues his office, and I think we're going to need to have them, the experts, reapply for additional funding.
Cindy, if elected, what would you do to provide a healthy business climate in the county?
It's communication, 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 and getting along with people, listening to the businesses. I think a real important thing is to have terrific transportation and connectivity available for businesses to come in.
Thank you. And Jeff Reinert, what would you do to provide a healthy business climate?
Well, of course, as maybe many people know, a lot of the economic development is inspired by each city, and they do the planning and zoning, and, you know, create the right atmosphere for business to come in. I've been meeting a lot with all the different councils that are in my district, and getting to know their needs, and getting to know them personally, and the desires of each one of those communities, more so than I ever knew before. And it's basically a support. I look at myself as, you know, part of the support that they need with the county to be able to accomplish the things that they want in the area of economic development. When I was mayor, I worked with the county and many cities to develop a tech corridor on the north side, which included five different cities, and, you know, was, now we're teed up and ready for, you know, basically, a data center or some multi-hundred-million-dollar project to come in, and I think we'll have some success with that. We've got a lot of people looking at it.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff Reinert, what steps can Anoka County Board take to address racism in Anoka County?
To address racism? Well, I don't know. I guess I don't know that we have a big problem at the county with that, so I guess we should probably continue to do what we're doing. Where there are problems that do arise, though, I would be the first one in line to lead the effort to take care of that as an issue. It's just despicable and should not be tolerated at all.
Thank you. Cindy Hansen, what steps can the Anoka County Board take to address racism in Anoka County?
Again, I feel this boils down to communication, and I believe what's, a lot of what is happening right now is people want to be heard, they want to have a voice, and to me, communication and listening solves a lot.
Thank you. Cindy Hansen, sorry. Would you, how would you reform the Anoka County Board and staff rules and procedures to make the decision-making process more open and transparent to the public?
I would like to see open forum at all meetings. I don't understand why there isn't open forum. I do not understand why, when you are an elected official, it just seems like the voters don't have a voice at the board level. There may be a reason for it, maybe something happened in the past that I'm unaware of, but I would like to bring that issue up.
Thank you. Jeff Reinert, how would you reform the Anoka County Board and staff rules and procedures to make the decision-making process more open and transparent to the public?
Maybe it's education, then, because, you know, it is quite open. There's over 40 different committees. I serve on 19 of them, and in every one of those committees, there is a time for public comment. People typically, you know, without the COVID issue, would be invited to come to any of those meetings, and they are broadcast. The one thing, though, that I was a little surprised to see at the county board is that they don't have public comment at the board meeting itself. It's been described to me that it's a little bit the same posture as, you know, like the House of Representatives, you know? They have their committees and stuff, and people can talk there, but when they're in and taking action, there isn't public comment. It's time to do business. Not sure that I completely agree with that, because when I was mayor of Lionel Lakes, that's one of the first things we did. We didn't have public comment, and that's actually, like, at the first meeting, that's the thing that we did, is we allowed people to have open mic and open forum to communicate. So, like I said, not quite sure that I agree with that. If the vote came around, I'd probably vote to allow public comment at the county board, no reason not to it.
Thank you. Next question, Jeff Reinert. How is your county commissioner district, your geographical area, different from the other districts in the county in terms of demographics and people? How does this affect your votes on the county board?
Well, it's interesting. My district is about 150 square miles. It's seven cities, and it is diverse. We do have higher, denser populations and diversity, and then we have, you know, a lot of open spaces, and that's more on the north end. Lionel Lakes does have a lot, too. But what was the question?
How is your district different from the other districts in terms of demographics?
Oh, that way. Yeah, so, I mean, you know, like I talked about before, autonomy is a big thing for me, to let the cities develop how they want to and be how they want to. Of course, we have a lot of diversity down in Fridley and Coon Rapids, and, you know, that are, you know, a little bit more populated and things like that, but, you know, I believe in cities, allowing cities to exist how they want to exist.
Okay. Cindy Hansen, how is your county commissioner district, your geographical area, different from the other districts in the county in terms of demographics and people? How will this affect your votes on the county board?
Well, I realize that the district does have six diverse areas, each having a unique personality, and I love and respect that. And as the Anoka County Commissioner of District Six, I would represent each and one of these communities, not just one. I'm sorry, what was the rest of the question?
I did the same thing.
Yeah. This is a new question. We've never had this before, and it was kind of fun to see a brand-new question come in from the public.
Well, maybe fun for you.
Yeah.
So, how will this affect your vote, and I think you kind of answered that?
Yeah, thank you. And I did want to say that I have been to all of the cities in the district, their meetings, some workshops, to get a feel for what their needs are in each diverse area.
Thank you. Okay, Cindy, should the county board create a succession plan for selecting a future Anoka County Administrator? What factors would you consider?
For choosing the new, a new administrator in the future?
If there were a new Anoka County Administrator, what factors would you consider, and should there be a succession plan?
You know, I've, as a former elected official, I've seen it go both ways. There are advantages of preparing a successor, if you want to say, but I guess I really believe that everything should be opened up, because you never know who might be out there that just surprises you and is the perfect fit for that position. So I would want things opened up to all.
Thank you. Jeff Reinert, should the county board create a succession plan for selecting a future Anoka County Administrator? What factors would you consider?
Yeah, actually, I think it's irresponsible not to. We always looked at that when I was mayor. In the city that I was mayor of, there were nine top positions when I got there as mayor. All of those nine positions were men. Over the course of 10 years, now five of them are women. We didn't specifically do that on purpose, but the city administrator, the finance director, the city engineer, the city planner, police chief, actually, now that's been replaced, and now with a man again. But, you know, what we did is we opened it up, and we just picked the right person, but you do have to have a succession plan. The city administrator that we have right in there right now, it's Sarah Cotton, I mean, she came on board as our finance director, just a rock star. And so, we knew that Jeff Carlson was going to be, you know, retiring within the next year, and so she went to school, got her master's degree in municipal government and administration, and, you know, gave her a conditional offer of employment, and when Jeff left, the new council that's in there now, they installed her, and she is the new city administrator. You've got to have a plan. It's irresponsible not to.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff Reinert. People with Alzheimer's and their caregivers appreciate the services provided by Anoka County's Family Caregiver Connection. Caregivers are noticing decline in our loved ones with the suspension of in-person services during COVID-19. What would be the process to form a committee to advise the county on these issues?
Yeah, so, and I'm getting calls on that and emails about that, actually. I mean, it's a real tragedy. I mean, you've got these senior housing facilities, and, you know, typically, families would show up and they'd visit on a regular basis, and, you know, those, one of those one-on-one contacts with the elderly, especially those that are having issues with age, it's, you know, like a shot in their arm of energy and life to have, you know, those visits, and those aren't happening right now, and there's a lot of people angry about it. But really, the COVID issue we have, and, you know, there are conversations about how to open it up, because, you know, when this whole thing first started, basically, it's shut down. Okay, so now you have the shutdown, and family can't visit their mothers, fathers, and relatives, and, but right now, we're talking about how we can, you know, maybe build out facility to accommodate that more. We've been doing that at the library and a lot of different Anoka County facilities, and spending money, actually, the COVID money that came in from the federal government, and that is being looked at now that, you know, we're underway to be able to accommodate that, because it is a problem. It is a problem.
Cindy Hansen, people with Alzheimer's and their caregivers appreciate the services provided by Anoka County's Family Caregiver Connection. And I want to add here, it's not just nursing homes, it's memory cafe and caregiver support groups and the gathering, we're a respite program. And the caregivers are noticing decline in our loved ones with the suspension of in-person services. What would be the process to form a committee to advise the county on these issues?
Unfortunately, I think this tragic situation started because a lot of the employees that were working at these facilities were having to work two jobs, and then bringing COVID in to the facilities. I think it has to go back to communication and having those employers pay a livable wage to the people who are taking care of our loved ones. I did see something on the news, though, that was so encouraging. They have, there's a couple places that have started it, and they have these hug booths, and they're all plastic, and they sanitize them and everything after a family member is able to give a hug. And I know, as a mom, I miss hugs, giving hugs so much, and I think that would really help if they could just get that hug.
Thank you. Cindy Hansen, what does accessibility as an elected official look like to you? In other words, how do you see yourself interacting with the residents of your district?
Having an open-door policy, phone calls, I would love to have coffee with your commissioner once a month in, at different locations throughout the district. Even if you didn't vote for me, I still would want to hear what you have to say.
Thank you. Jeff Reinert, what does accessibility as an elected official look like to you? In other words, how do you see yourself interacting with the residents of your district?
Well, I'm doing that, and it is just to be accessible. It's kind of in the question itself. So the way I look at the dynamic of the public and the government, you have your city council. City council is kind of the first layer of contact, and the closest contact most residents have with government. And I think as close as you can get to each city council member and each city council, and show up at their meetings and interact with them, you're then connecting with those communities. A lot of people are contacting me, though, directly, and maybe that's from my previous involvement in the community and people knowing me for the last 45 years and being involved with, you know, the community at the government level for 20 years, and just, you know, driving to their houses, listening to them, solving their problems for them. But yeah, I'm getting a lot of, you know, personal contact, and I love that, because then you can directly affect the situation and solve the problem for them. But I think, you know, as a whole, as a plan, you know, just stay close to those city councils and help them, help the people, and assist in any way you can.
Thank you. One more question before our closing statements. There are many people experiencing homelessness in our community. How and what can the county do to help these people, Jeff Reinert?
Support all of those, I mean, you know, yes, there is homeless, and yes, there are a lot of organizations that help those homeless. I think they're doing a good job. There's always going to be homeless, and so we're going to always need to have these organizations that help them. And the best thing that the county can do is, you know, stay close to them and assist them in any way. It's unfortunate, it's a revolving door. Some people are homeless, then they find jobs, they find, you know, shelter, and they get out of that situation, but then others, unfortunately, fall into that. So, it's a problem that I don't believe will ever be solved, and so we always need to have those organizations that help them and then support them in any way we can.
Thank you. Cindy Hansen, there are many ways, there are many people experiencing homelessness in our community. How and what can the county do to help these people?
Well, along with helping those organizations, I think we need to bring business and employment to the county. Businesses that bring great jobs, that have a livable wage.
Thank you. So now let's have your closing statements. Tell people why they should vote for you. Cindy Hansen, you first.
First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for giving me this opportunity, and remind everyone of my nine-years experience that has given me irreplaceable experience in leadership, negotiating, balancing budgets, prioritizing, thinking outside the box, but most importantly, listening to people and giving people a voice. Remember my nine-years experience working with a two-county, three-city joint powers agreement with a fire department? My experience will be crucial in the lucrative development of the Minnesota Technology Corridor, reopening and bringing businesses and employment to Anoka County. I would not destroy a 30-year successful joint powers agreements against voters' wishes. I would never build a fire station on dedicated city park land, and I would never put myself on the Lionel Lakes Planning and Zoning Committee while I am a commissioner representing six other communities. I am Cindy Hansen, and I am asking for your vote.
Thank you. Jeff Reinert, your closing statement.
Okay. A lot of things you won't do, but I guess you will run for office, only living in the area one year.
Seven.
It's kind of ridiculous, really. So anyway, I'm Anoka County Commissioner Jeff Reinert, and Anoka County has $300 million budget, 2,000 employees, and is the fourth-largest county in the state. You need somebody in there that knows what the heck they're doing. I'm in there right now. Everybody tells me I'm doing a great job, so that might be the best reason to vote for me, to return me to office. But I am a strong voice for the people and all the residents in District Six. Creative solutions, common sense, due diligence, and I think I'm the right person for the job. So, I hope that I've earned your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for speaking to voters about issues in for running for Anoka County Commissioner in District Six. Thank you to all of you watching for your interest in becoming informed voters. You will find links to all of the Meet the Candidate forums on the LWV ABC website as we move through this election. this election season, as well as on QCTV's website. You can request an absentee ballot now on the Secretary of State's website, MNvotes.org, or go to your city hall and to vote anytime after September 18th. If you need to register to vote or to update your registration, you can do that online or when you go to vote. Make your voice heard in the general election by voting on or before November 3rd. Thank you, and stay healthy and safe.